2019 regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Pastor Curtis Armore from Empowerment Ministry will be doing the invocation tonight, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Don Harris. Everyone, please stand.
Good evening. Lord, we thank you for this evening that we have come together as one to hear of the concerns of our city. God, I just ask that you give us one sound mind to operate and cooperate with one another, that we may get the answers that we need to better move forward in this city. We pray, God, for every council member of the city of Hawthorne, the Hawthorne PD. We thank you also for the officials, those in the rightful places. Thank you for all the ministries and pastors and first ladies and all our families in the city of good neighbors. We thank you, and we give you praise, glory, and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Face the flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to both of you. Wanted to recognize a special guest who's here in our audience, and that is Los Angeles City Council member and president of the Los Angeles City Council, Herb Wesson. Can we give him a warm welcome, please? Thank you for being here. Also, I guess before we start the meeting, I think it'd be a great idea for our city manager to introduce three new faces that are joining us here at the meeting. So don't be surprised that you have three faces here. There's a reason why.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have Feliz Lopez, our new finance director. Could you stand up, Feliz? Feliz will be overseeing payroll and general ledgers and grants at Finance Department. We have another new finance director in charge of business license and account payable, Mr. Frank Feng. Finally came to fruition, results of months of recruitment activities. I have another one to introduce, Director of Administrative Services, John Ramirez. Could you stand up?
Mr. Ramirez will be functioning as Assistant City Manager in the city.
And will they be joining us at these regular city council meetings?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great. Welcome. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for coming on board. Councilmember Olivia, Mayor Protem, Olivia Valentine has a presentation on the agenda today, Black History Month. She has a couple of guests who will be presenting, and welcome to them as well. Go ahead, Mayor.
Would Mr. Michael Lawson come to the podium, please? Mr. Michael Lawson is the president and CEO of the Los Angeles Urban League, one of the oldest and most respected civil rights organizations in the United States, dedicated to providing economic empowerment, educational opportunities, and the guarantee of civil rights for underserved communities in the Los Angeles area. Mr. Lawson is an attorney, having graduated from Harvard Law School and practiced with the prestigious firm of Skadden, Arps, Slate, Mager, and Flom from 1980 until his retirement in 2011. From 2005 to 2011, he served on the Board of Airport Commissioners for Los Angeles, for Los Angeles World Airports, and as its president from 2008 to 2011. In 2014, Mr. Lawson was appointed by President Obama as the United States Ambassador to the Council of the International Civil Aviation Organization, also known as ICAO, a UN specialized agency. He held that position from 2014 to 2017. Tonight, Mr. Lawson will describe the impact the Los Angeles Urban League has had on Los Angeles during the league's 97-year history. Welcome, Mr. Lawson, to Hawthorne.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that introduction, but you took half my speech away, so I'll only be about an hour or so.
All right. That's good enough.
But thank you again for inviting me. I really appreciate the invitation, and I'm honored to be here. And in the presence of the president of the City Council of Los Angeles, Herb Wesson, I am honored to be here. So good evening, and I want to start by talking a little bit about who I am. What you described is my professional career, but I want you to know that I grew up in the Los Angeles area. My family moved here from Arkansas in 1962, and we've lived in a number of different areas throughout the city, including Gardena, so I'm very familiar with the Hawthorne area. Yes, I did graduate from Harvard Law School, but before that, I went to Westchester High School, and I went to Loyola Marymount University. This is my city, and I am proud to be a part of this. And now I stand before you as the CEO of the Los Angeles Urban League. As was stated, this organization began 97 years ago. Interestingly enough, it was started in this year of where we are seeing women taking more and more control of their power through politics and in corporate America and in boardrooms. The Los Angeles Urban League was started, was founded by a woman in Los Angeles. Her name was Catherine Barr, and she founded the organization because she was concerned about the infant mortality rates of black women in Los Angeles. Sadly, this is an issue that we're still struggling with today, but I talk about it because it is, in essence, an illustration of what the Urban League has always been about. The Urban League has been about taking on the difficult issues that plague our communities and cause our communities to be less than what they should be, where they're not living up to the standard that we just spoke about in the Pledge of Allegiance. Since this is the month that we celebrate our history, I thought it would be appropriate to talk a little bit about what she had to go through in those first years and what she was able to accomplish. The fact is, under her leadership, the Los Angeles Urban League developed a professional and business-like approach to its mission and objectives. From its inception, the Los Angeles Urban League developed a strong research and analysis team of experts, many of them volunteers, to identify inequities in hiring, health, housing, documenting those grievances and abuses and discriminatory practices, and through that, they were able to achieve some amazing successes. I won't go through all of them, but it's interesting to note that one of the things that is pointed out in the history books when we talk about the Los Angeles Urban League is their ability to... One of the first things they did was they got an African-American clerk hired at a Safeway. Sounds simple, but at the time, if you were an African-American in Los Angeles, you could not get a job that was above being a janitor. But that was the power and the wisdom that Catherine Barr and others brought to the table. She was able to form an alliance at that time with an organization called the Los Angeles Community Chest. We now know this as the United Way, and this is a collaboration that still exists today. So the bonds that she created, the collaboration that she created, are still strong and still working within this community. Over the years, there've been a number of great leaders who have held a chair, which I now sit, but none was greater than John Mack. John Mack, at the age of 32, took over this role in 1969 and held it until 2005. Sadly, he passed away this last June, and we are all saddened by that, but the fact is, we stand on his shoulders, and we continue to do battle for the people that we have been asked to serve. After 97 years, I am only the eighth person to sit in this chair. 97 years, and only eight people have been blessed to hold the title of president and CEO of the Los Angeles Urban League. So with that, I am honored and humbled, and I am proud of the legacy that we have, but there is still much to do. I look at this august body, and I see the diversity in this room, and I see that this is where a lot of us need to be, and I applaud you for what you have done and what you are doing, and I commit to you that the Los Angeles Urban League will be here to help you if you need it. We are willing to bring, to bear, all the resources that we have, and our resources go beyond Los Angeles. We are part of a network of affiliates, more than 90 strong in 35 states, with a very strong national organization in New York, and we are determined to continue to push forward, to encourage this country, encourage the people in this country that is made up of immigrants, to live up to the Pledge of Allegiance that we just did. But now we're working with some new tools. It's not just workforce development, it's not just training people for a job, but we're looking to pivot to the 21st century to talk about entrepreneurship, talk about incubation, to try to prepare the up-and-coming workforce for what's happening in the next century. That's going to take a lot of work, it's going to take money to improve our schools, it's going to take the vision of people like yourselves to address issues that transcend what a nonprofit can do. Homelessness and education are the two of the biggest things, but we also have to deal with a population that was wrongly incarcerated over the last 30 years that is coming back into our society. We must welcome them with open arms, and we want to be a part of that. I leave you with the promise that, as the president of the Los Angeles Urban League, I will be at your service to help you with any issues that you think might be on our plate, but there are many that are on our plate. John Mack made it clear that, as the president of the Urban League, my job is to be involved in all issues that affect underserved communities in the Los Angeles County area, which is why he became a member of the Los Angeles Police Commission, appointed by Antonio Viragosa, a position that people thought he shouldn't hold. And I will tell you this one story. He retired in 2005, but when Mayor Garcetti was looking to appoint a new police chief, all three candidates came to his home to get his endorsement, because that's the power that he held years after he had walked away from that position. And Chief Moore was appointed as chief, and when he stood up to give his acceptance speech two days after John Mack passed away, he stood at the podium at the Police Academy and mentioned John Mack's name, and he got choked up. And I have to remind people, this is LAPD, where we had Darryl Gates and Chief Parker before him. And if you don't see the arc of justice moving because of the work that John Mack did, you're not paying attention. Again, thank you so much for allowing me to come here and talk a little bit about the history that is Los Angeles and the history that is, and the men and women who are moving this city toward the arc of justice, and I pledge that I will be a part of that as we go forward. Thank you very much.
Just to thank you so much for your presentation. We really appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate you being here. It's very important, the work that your organization has done over the years. The city of Hawthorne is the city of good neighbors, and we're an inclusive community, but it wasn't that long ago that our city suffered a lot of the injustices that a lot of, you know, the people that you try to help, that you do help, faced. We used to be a city that had these sundown laws. You had to get out of town before it was sun if you were a minority. There were restrictive covenants that we used to have, which did not allow for people of color, both Latino, brown, and black, to own homes here, just like in Santa Monica and the West LA and a lot of the cities around here. So we've come a long way. I think those people that, like, used to promote those types of ideas would be turning over in their grave if they saw a Latino mayor, an African, directly from Africa here, African-American, Arabic, Palestinian, or Lebanese, I'm so sorry, black, and, you know, the mixture that we have up here, they'd be turned... So Cuban? I thought we were Latino, brother. All right. So what I'm saying is, thank you so much for your efforts. We wouldn't be here with this type of dynamic if it wasn't for the efforts of your organization. So thank you once more, sir. Thank you. Also want to give a warm welcome to Longdale Mayor, Robert Pullen Miles. Let's give him a warm welcome, please. I'm going to invite our guest, council president, LA City Council President, to come address the city council before we proceed with the next items.
Thank you, thank you. And I promise all the good people that are here that I will be brief. I bring you greetings from the suburbs to the northeast of here. So on behalf of the mayor of the city of Los Angeles and all of my colleagues on the Los Angeles City Council, it's a pleasure to be here to spend just a couple of quality minutes with you. I just have to say that having Michael Lawson here is a wonderful thing. He is one of the smartest men that I've ever met in my life, and he is leading an organization that has opened up the doors for all people, regardless of your color or where you come from or what have you. I want to say, and also I'll give another shout-out to the mayor of Longdale, my dear friend and brother, and it's an honor to be here to look at this council, because you do represent the diversity that I truly believe the Lord intended when He made all of us. You guys work together as a team to deliver services, the services that your people want, need, and expect, and I salute you for that. I salute you for your diversity. And I have to say this about your mayor, who is a dear friend of mine. Our relationship is growing daily. I am supportive of what you do and want you to know that if I can do anything, if the city of LA can do anything to help you, we are here for you. To another new and dear friend, the African-African, the African-African-American, this guy, Alex, is just a bundle of energy and good ideas, and I think he only sleeps 15 minutes a day. I want to thank Councilmember Valentine for inviting me and affording me the opportunity to chat with you for a few minutes prior to this presentation. I think you should continue, not just to do this where it relates to African-American History Month, but Women History Month, Latino History Month, because each and every one of us here, we are the United States of America. We all built this country, and this country is so great, and so many people want to come here because of all of us. So anyway, I'm going to sit down, but just say, it's an honor, a pleasure to be with each and every one of you, and, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to seeing you. I believe it's on March 7th. All right. Anyway, thank you, guys, for having me and letting me disturb your meeting. Thank you all so very much. Give your council a round of applause. Hard-working, working-together council.
The mayor of Longdale, would you like to say hello? Just come on up and say hello.
And my speech is only about 15 minutes long, so you guys know I'm pretty brief, but, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, and my colleagues and the neighboring city, what do you call yourselves, the community of good neighbors.
That's right.
And Hawthorne has definitely been a good neighbor to the city of Longdale. You know, there was a period way back in the days where we didn't have such a great, great relationship. Sometimes, just like neighbors next doors, where you have these feuds, going back and forth, but I can tell you, over the last, like, 10, maybe 15 years, the city of Longdale and the city of Hawthorne has really become great friends and great neighbors, and we're doing some great things together. And, you know, I just want to commend all the city council members for all the things that you guys do here in the city of Hawthorne to make Hawthorne the second-best city in the South Bay.
Sergeant of Arms, can you escort him out? Sergeant of Arms, please.
You guys caught that right. And I just want to say congratulations, and thank you, guys, for spotlighting African-American History Month, because it's very important that we tell our story, because our story is not just African-American history and story, but it's the story of America. And like the president of the council said, it's about America, and we all represent the United States of America, its diversity, and we're looking that way as well, and the city of Longdale as well. I mean, most of you probably know better than myself the history of not only the city of Hawthorne, but also the city of Longdale. We had pretty similar histories, and we've overcome those obstacles as well, and we got a little diversity going on as well, and so we look forward to continue to work with you, Mr. Mayor, and the whole entire council. So thank you for having me.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. I think somebody over there needs a little bit of help. Sergeant of Arms, question? So if you could help him out with the question, what he has. Okay. Councilmember Alex Montero has a presentation on the agenda with regards to Michael's Learning Place, their new catering business. Tell us about it.
Well, they're going to tell us about it. Well, I think about like a month ago, right? Myself and my council colleague, Haidara Ward, went to the grand open of the Mikey's Catering, and it was a beautiful event, you know, with a lot of caterings, and if you know about Michael's Place, you know, they've been around for a long time, and they've been helping, you know, the childrens and adults that have emotional and social problems, you know, not a problem, but challenge, right? So we used to call them once upon a time, the handicapped kids. That's not the language we use nowadays, right? It's the Disabled Development Challenge that the kids and the adults have. So I'm going to ask Ms... Forgot to have to read. Anna, to bring your colleagues and introduce them, and then tell us all about Michael's Catering and your Michael's Place, because that is a place to my heart. Come on, don't be shy.
Mr. Lynch, come on up.
Mr. Lynch, you have to come on in there. Oh, come on. You should be put right there. But it's about women, right? Your power. Okay.
Next one. But thank you very much, council, for having us here and giving us the opportunity to share what we do at Michael's Learning Place. Like Councilmember Alex Montero said, that we have an exciting new project that we are working on, but I'll go over a little bit of our history and how we have been so fortunate to be in the city of Hawthorne. I myself have been raised pretty much in the city. I grew up with Mayor, pretty much at St. Joseph's Catholic Church, which is where Michael's Learning Place started in 2002, and I even went to high school with Councilmember Awad. Many stories to tell if you're interested in hearing about them. Another time, another time.
I was an honors student.
But another time. My name is Anna Geraldi. I'm the director of the Path to Independence Adult Day Program, and I've been with Michael's for the past 11 and 1/2 years.
My name is Blaze Shaw. I am the project manager of Mikey's, which is the bakery, catering, coffee business that Councilmember Alex was talking about. I've worked at Michael's for three years, and I'm a Hawthorne resident as well.
So we want to talk to you about the inspiration of it all. Michael is the inspiration. She is our executive director, Ed Lynch's daughter. She unfortunately passed away at the age of seven, but he wanted her legacy to continue onward. Basically, what we do at Michael's is provide our students with intellectual and developmental disabilities the opportunity to do what we do every single day. Everything from making your bed to having appropriate hygiene when you go to work, learning about how to communicate via email, how to communicate with your peers, all of that, all of the essentials that you would have expected to learn in school. That's what we teach all of our students. Our mission, Michael's Learning Place believes that children and adults with developmental disabilities deserve to be challenged with opportunities that build self-esteem and independence, creating long-term success for life. We basically live that in every single one of the practices that we have in our programs, and you'll get to see that even further with our Mikey's truck. So we opened our doors in July 2002. I had mentioned that we started in St. Joseph's in the Guadalupe Hall. We slowly grew out of that. Yep, very much, Mayor, right? We grew out of that, and we expanded to our current location, which is on Rosecranton Shoop, right next to the place that sells firewood, across the street from Food for Less. But even before that, in 2006, we opened a secondary location in the city of Culver City. That one's a smaller one, but we still have programs and services that are coming out of there as well. In 2015, we closed escrow on our location in Rosecrance, and we pretty much are leaving it for generations moving forward. In 2013, that's when our program started, out of a need to address what happens to our population after they leave the transition age of high school. We wanted to make sure that they have, again, the same opportunities that we have growing up. If some of them cannot move on to higher education, we give them the ability to work at different places, or give them the job experiences to build up their resume. And then in 2015, in December 2015, I'll let Blaze talk a little bit more about that. That's when we opened up our Mikey's Catering and Bakery Service. So we provide services for those who have autism, mild intellectual disabilities, cerebral palsy, and Down Syndrome. That's just to name a few of our student and clientele base. Our programs begin with our after-school program. They are more teaching social and recreational activities. We have things that go over hygiene practices, laundry skills, grocery shopping, cooking, fencing even, music and performances and the like. And that's pretty much for our students that are between the ages of eight, all the way up until 22. Our Michael's Independent Living Experience, Mile for Short, is a snapshot of our Adult Day program. So for our population, transitions are the most challenging. So we provide a program that takes place on Saturdays to give everybody a chance to learn a little bit more about our Adult Day program and know what the expectations that we have for our adults. And with our Adult Day program, that's where we have three components to that program. The first track is the focus on independent living skills. The second track is job training experience, and then the third track is support and employment, where we go out to different job sites with the students and provide additional assistance to make sure that they get the job done, and they maintain consistency and sustainability.
Hi again. Again, my name is Blaze, and we started Mikey's about three years ago here in Hawthorne. The executive director, Ed Lynch, who's here today, he had a vision to start some form of a coffee shop where the students, adult students of Michael's, who are in Anna's program, could get work experience. So it kind of altered in its vision, and we hit the ground running about three years ago with a very slow start, operating as a pop-up. So there's three components to the business. There's the coffee aspect, where we have baristas in training, who are actually learning how to prepare anything that you would get at like a Starbucks or something like that, lattes, espressos, but better. And then we also have a bakery, which we're very proud of, and our commercial kitchen resides here in Hawthorne at our facility at Michael's. That commercial- That commercial kitchen was paid for by community support and foundation support. And we are a full-fledged business, so we are inspected by the health department and all of our bakers in there work Monday through Friday, using non-GMO ingredients and organic eggs, preparing recipes from start to finish, anything from breakfast pastries to cookies, desserts. And we're trying to expand that a lot this year as well. Hopefully, we'll branch out into some more specialty items like cakes and more complex pastries. And then the third component is the catering and we just kind of dabble in that. We do mainly for businesses or corporations like lunch meetings. And we also do some past appetizers for small evening events. And we've done a couple of those here in the city of Hawthorne, partnering with Haidar actually, and in Common Space as well as other locations. So the newest venture for us is the truck. And we actually have the truck parked out front. So whenever we're dismissed for a break, I encourage you to come out and chat with me a little bit more. We'll have some of our famous Ryan's Chocolate Chip Cookies and some coffee as well. We have decaf too, for people who think it's too late. But just to tell that story really quick, Ryan was our first bakery hire when we started. And this was an individual, a young adult in his early twenties, who he happens to have autism. And a lot of people kind of had some doubts about his abilities to even be in Anna's program, the Adult Day program, just because, you know, of what we didn't know he could do. But Anna encouraged him to be in the program and then he eventually made his way to the bakery where he has learned how to bake and has really taken to it. He's found something that he's very passionate about. He's able to use... He's brilliant. He's able to use his math skills. He's memorized recipes. He's dedicated. He comes on time, which is hard to find. I'm sure a lot of business owners know that. It's hard to find good employees that want to actually show up on time to work. So we're very grateful for that. The truck is, like I said, it's outside, so you can come take a look. We're available for hire. We operate as a vendor or as a caterer for events. And we're hoping to build up kind of a route in the mornings around Hawthorne in the South Bay. So, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. A quick question for the ladies.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, we understand that you help, you know, development, talent, disabled, challenged individuals. So I just was just curious, do you do fundraising for Michael's Learning Place? Do you get state assistance or is it like grants or can you... I'm just very curious about that.
That's a little bit of all the above. So we do have several fundraisers that take place all throughout the year. The next one that we have coming up is on Saturday, May 4th, our annual luncheon and auction, and that's gonna be at the West Drift. That, we have several sponsors who contribute to the event. And we have several performances that take place throughout the entire event for... that our students perform and have a silent and live auction. Then we have a few smaller events like our poker night. Last year, we had it at Common Space Brewery. We also had Drag Queen Bingo that was located... Piqued your interest, huh, Mayor?
No, no, no. I'm not gonna say anything because...
That took place in October. And then we also have our second biggest fundraiser, which is our Friends of Michael's Art Show, where we showcase student artwork. Not only student artwork, but any artist with a disability. And we opened up our facility for that. We do receive state funding through what's called regional centers. We're vended through Westside Regional Center, that's located in Culver City. And then also Harbor Regional Center, which is located in Torrance, I believe. And several regional centers from wherever our clientele base is.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that information.
To the chair. I want to thank, you know, both of you who come to do this presentation, Mr. Lynch over there, but I will encourage everybody to go visit your center because it's a beautiful place, especially, you know, for the young childrens and adults, you know, working there together, playing together. And especially the after-school programs that you guys have is outstanding, right? Because these kids will not have a place to be and like you said, sometimes they have a lot of challenge. But they come through because you guys are there to help them out. And especially with this catering program. So the cookies was fantastic, you know, it was delicious. And then we make coffees like, you know, like you said, better than Starbucks. Because I don't like Starbucks. So your coffee was better than Starbucks. So keep doing and probably I'll send you an invitation to come for the... We're gonna have this Earth Day and Resource Providers Fair on April 13. So I'm gonna send you an invitation, so maybe you guys can come and show up the truck over there at the Memorial Central Park, okay?
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
To the chair.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you guys for coming out. I've known Ed Lynch, Anna and Blaze for the past three, four years lately. As our councilmember Montero mentioned, you have to go down to the facility, you have to meet the children and you just have to feel the environment within Michael's. It's a warm, family feeling and I have to give a shout-out to the main person that's always quiet and behind the scenes, Mr. Ed Lynch. Because of his leadership style, the way he loves these childrens and he pours his heart honestly into every program, trying to find a way to push them to be independent and to know that they're not... There is nothing wrong with them. They're actually special. There's something special within them. They're not different. They're just special. And I applaud you for that and I love the story that we had, especially when I did my interview on you. I still have to get you that paper. I know, I know. But yes, please come out and visit and if... At their fundraiser events too, please go to their fundraisers. They can use all the funds they can get just to help these children out. And again, appreciate all the work you guys are doing here.
Through the chair.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah. Well, I just, I also wanted to echo my thanks to your organization as well. And also to say that any program like this that helps students, developmentally disabled students, to develop to their full potential is worth its weight in gold because there's so many of these children that are left with no one to support them. And so they don't develop to their full potential. So I congratulate Michael's for having that vision. And also for your art show, Friends of Michael Art Show, I'd like to find out more about that because I'm very interested in promoting art in Hawthorne, as you know. And also, I'd like to find out, when you have the show, would you please come back and let us know about that? Thank you.
All right, folks. So since we do have Mikey's Catering Truck outside, I'm going to recess the meeting for about five minutes for the city council members. Five minutes for the city council members, but the rest of you can spend a longer time out there, but we need to come back within five minutes to, you know, conduct business. So we have a temporary break for five minutes.
Okay, folks, the city council meeting is now in session. I'd like to have a presentation, although it's not on our agenda. I'd like to ask the principal of Hawthorne High School to please come up and give us a little background as to what's going on right now with the school district, with the high school.
Thank you so much for letting me cut in line. Good evening, I'm Vanessa Landis-Fine, I'm the principal of Hawthorne High School. I just came by tonight to give you a quick update on what's going on with the school. I realize that you probably drive by there and you see a lot of construction fencing going up, and it doesn't look like anything's happening, but I'm here to tell you that a lot of things have happened since the bond was approved. So during the last summer, we were actually able to construct a brand-new wood technology lab. It's on the back of the school, by the pool. It is a state-of-the-art wood technology facility. It has a digital design lab in it, and then the, what used to be called a wood shop, is now a lab setting, and it has both new and old equipment in it. But the new technology allows our students to really experience what it is to work in a wood-working facility now, and it eventually will articulate to El Camino College, so our students will exit that program with El Camino College credit. Beyond that, on the other half of campus, what the construction crews have been doing up until now is they have been taking out the old dirt and putting in new dirt. So they've created a new foundation for us to build our buildings on, and then last week, amazingly enough, a building went up. So we actually have, we have the frame of a new building going up, and that would be our new performing arts building. It's going to house our band, our vocal program. We just added a chorus program again to Hawthorne High School. Our band also recently added a mariachi ensemble, so that's going to be very unique there, and our drama program. We also are putting our ROTC program into that building, and we've affectionately dubbed it "The Noise Building." So it's the first in a series of buildings that's going to go up, and we're looking forward to moving into that, those buildings in a year and a half from now. Construction will continue. I would love to invite all of you to come by the school and visit and take a look at what we're doing. It's much more interesting from the inside. From the outside, you just see a giant crane right now. Right now, currently, we're working with our partner districts, the feeder school districts who enroll our newest freshman class. They are coming in and they're joining us in our Technical Art and Design Academy, our Criminal Justice Academy, and our Engineering Academy. We are also, this year, starting to offer a dual immersion Spanish language program, which will be new, and it'll be, it's across the district, we're recruiting students for that program, so we're very excited to see that move forward. In addition, I should let you know that our academy programs are doing very, very well. The academies at Hawthorne High School have the highest dual enrollment numbers in the district, which means that almost all of our seniors who are enrolled in academy programs earn El Camino College credit prior to graduating multiple units. So they're going into college ahead of the curve. And then, on the week of March 11th, if you'd like to come by, we are also doing our honor roll assemblies for our students, and you can come see our best and brightest receive awards. Thank you.
For the benefit of the community, can you tell us what the, can you list the academies?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So that they can appreciate what we have?
Yes, okay, so we have our Technical Art and Design Academy, the Technical Art and Design Academy. The students are learning digital media and digital design strategies in there. They also take 3D art programs in there. So the goal is eventually to have students working in advertising, product design. We talk about that we're training them for the careers that don't exist yet. We have a criminal justice program. The criminal justice program works with law enforcement in the area, and those students are working on careers that are law enforcement or law-related, and they, they're our highest rate of earning community college credit. Our third full academy is our Engineering Academy. We made news last year because we actually manufactured a part for the International Space Station, which NASA purchased from us, and we're continuing to manufacture that part, so that's kind of cool.
And you're paying your taxes on that? I'm just kidding.
I don't know, I think it comes in as donations, but we're very fortunate to have fantastic partners with the Engineering Academy that support us in that. And then, of course, our Wood Technology Pathway is one of our newest programs as well.
It's great to see you, thanks. Welcome to the city of Hawthorne's Hawthorne High School. I know that I used to work with, under Principal Newell, I was a substitute teacher there for a little bit. But one of the things that I wanted to mention to you is that sometimes we go out for nightlife and to go to theater in other cities, in other locations, and get all fancy, but we have like a good theater program there. So one of the things is that I would like to see if you could somehow either put it really right up front on your webpage, or let us know so we can help promote you, because I had passed by and I saw on the marquee, Curious, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, and I didn't get a chance to see it because I didn't see the date and the time. So it'd be great if you could just help, let us help you promote stuff like that.
You bet, absolutely.
To be able to, you know, go there ourselves and get the community to go out there and support you. That would have been a good one. I read that book.
Do the chair.
Excellent.
Actually, you've been here for almost like five years almost?
Three, three.
Because, because we have been working a lot about, you know, with the Relay for Life and the 5K, so I appreciate all the help you have given me for these past three years. But you guys have done an outstanding job over there at Hawthorne High, because a lot of people don't know that. I did my internship over there in 2004 when I was doing counseling and education, so I spent quite a bit of time over there, so a lot of change has happened since 2004. So I appreciate all the help, and it's a community school that you guys have tremendous achievement for these past, you know, few years, so thank you very much for coming.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that the academy has to do with graphic design and...
See, nobody, can you hear me? Do you have programs for interns or giving kids an opportunity to come and show us how good they are and things like that?
So, not yet. The digital, the technical art and design academy is, it's only been around for two years, so we only have freshmen and sophomores in it, so they are not at a skill level yet, where we're trying to sell their products to outside agencies, but they will be.
Yeah, no, I had, for a organization that I belong to, I've had some kids from losing their, over the years, come and do an internship at our office, and I was just wondering if you had any programs like that available?
We definitely would be interested in that, in the coming year, for the next school year, because then they will be old enough to do that, but right now, ninth and 10th graders, we don't send them out.
Sophomores are so much smarter than I am, so I could tell you, but yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one of the things I wanted to highlight is that relationship that you, partnership between Wedgewood, one of our local businesses that's here in the city of Hawthorne, through the Big Brothers Big Sisters program, that they were able to come out and sponsor a group of high school teenagers there, so...
Yes, we have 20 students involved in that Big Brothers Big Sisters program, so that's going really well. Our students are really enjoying that experience, and it's really helping a lot of our students too, so we're very appreciative of that partnership.
Yeah, we're very happy for you. So thank you so much for being here in the city of Hawthorne and for all the great work you're doing. Let's give a round of applause.
Thank you so much, have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to ask Carol Maston to please come up to the podium. Mr. City Attorney?
Is this oral communication?
Okay, so, no, this is...
Why don't we just read the guideline for oral communication?
This isn't oral communication, this is, we're gonna swear in for senior commission.
Okay, then, why don't you ask if anybody would like to speak?
We already approved it, though, at the last one, didn't we? Can somebody check minutes real quick? If you have the minutes from last week?
She was here last time.
Okay, we did approve it, ma'am?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, all right. Does anybody have any, since we're bringing up and swearing somebody in, does anybody in the audience have anything to comment with regards to this previous appointment? Okay, if not, I'll, everything's, everybody's okay? Are you okay, Commissioner Darling Love? Having her join your ranks? All right, all right, let's bring her up. So I'm going to do the oath, you'll do it following a little bit later with the city clerk, but I'd like to go, give you the oath to welcome you into the, to the senior commission.
I care, I'm Maston. That I was supported in the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemy, foreign and domestic, that I would represent a true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
Are you in class? Are you in class?
In the Constitution of the State of California.
Study session.
That any provision reservation, or preparation, and that will, and that will, and taking discharge of duties, upon his and the opposite entrance. Congratulations, ma'am. My name is Carol Maston, and I have resided in the city of Hawthorne for a while, since 1972. I've been married for 50 years. I married at a very young age, but anyway, I raised three children in Hawthorne, and I'm an active, I've been active in my, my community, and also I worked for the county of Los Angeles for over 46 years, where I retired as a director of public social services. So I've been around for a while, I may look young, but I'm not that young, but I feel young at heart, and I'm so honored to have been selected as the senior citizen commissioner, and I will do my best to fulfill this position to the best of my abilities. I've been in leadership for a while, so I hope that I can add and can help to promote the senior citizen commission, and believe me, I'm excited, I want to do this. Darlene Love had encouraged me, and I said, "Okay, I'll do it." I did retire from the county, and I said, "I don't want another job," and she said, "Oh, you would love this and you'll be good for it." So I'm here for my city, I love Hawthorne, and I am one that have seen the city just change. When I first moved to Hawthorne, my community was, I guess you would say, diverse, but many of the folks left when we moved in, and now they're coming back, so I have seen it go full circle. And I, you know, I look out now and I see my neighbors, and we're all diverse, I mean, it's like, everybody's there. I mean, I look out, I see Koreans, I see, you know, black, Mexican, white, everybody's there. So we are, on 115th Street where I live, it is completely diverse, and I'm enjoying my community, and like I said, I raise my children, and I feel safe in my community. I just love Hawthorne, and I will do my best to make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, congratulations, welcome. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you please read the guidelines for oral communication, sir?
Sure. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation. Persons, sorry, that's it? Thank you.
Okay, and a reminder, please, no detailed comments to the people speaking during oral communications. If you need to speak, you can certainly refer to staff for further study, or you can tell us to put it on the agenda, but, and no, please, no more than 30 seconds if you need to speak.
All right, I saw you looking at me, so, okay, fine. Oh, wait, come on, Ms. Williams. All right, so, so is that point of information, Mr. City Attorney? Is that a more concise disclaimer there? It seems like it's more concise, it's been like, good?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good, I like that, I like that very much. All right, so, Pat Donaldson, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and city council. Patricia Donaldson, President/CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. First, I just want to be able to make a statement. This is from the South Bay Bookworm Council Board. The report summarizes the January 17th South Bay Bookworm Council Board meeting activities and programs accomplished during the second quarter of program year 2018 to 2019. Okay, so I would like to mention that the state of the city is March 7, and that's going to be registration is at 11, the follow-up would be... Uh, the photo op with the mayor is at 11:30 and we start sharp at 12 noon. And we have sold 47 tables and we only have three tables left. And every table this year for the first time, it's, it's amazing. Every seat is taken on every table. So I'm really very proud and I thank everyone that has sponsored, uh, or have bought a seat for the State of the City. It's gonna be very good this year. And, um, the, the last thing I want to mention is that you had mentioned last time that you were gonna allow us to have a meet from the, from the city to the, to the chamber. So Marty and our chief is gonna make sure that that takes place. And I thank you, Mayor, for that happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Gordon Michael Migo? Is he here? There he is. How you do, how you doing, sir?
Okay. Reset time. Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October the 8th, 1952. A couple of things I want to speak about tonight. Uh, one in regards to housing residential developments. Uh, legislation that's pending before the state legislature. And, uh, one that we're somewhat familiar with that, uh, came to our attention end of last year was a remake of SB 827 that was rejected by the state legislature in the summer. Now called SB 50 by Senator Scott Weiner. Uh, but, uh, uh, which has to be opposed and all that. But a more onerous, uh, bit of legislation is, uh, being brought forward by Senator Nancy Skinner, a Democrat from Berkeley. Uh, her bill, which is SB 330, uh, would impose a, a whole series of mandates, uh, you know, uh, for cities and counties and basically, uh, going even further beyond, uh, what SB 50 would do as far as stripping the cities and counties of their authority to decide on residential developments, especially, uh, as it relates to bus stops and, uh, metro, you know, stations and so forth. So, uh, I, I will be, uh, providing you the, uh, information that, uh, came across. And for those that want to check it out, Los Angeles Times, uh, of, uh, you know, February the 24th, uh, this year. Excellent article, uh, very good summary. Second I want to spark, uh, speak about is transportation. And, uh, we hear so much about, uh, completing our transit systems, you know, throughout, uh, you know, the LA area and especially, uh, before, you know, the Olympics, you know, come along. So here what we want to do is to, uh, uh, what is being proposed is monorails to be built, uh, on our freeways, uh, throughout the Los Angeles County area, which would be a very good inducement for people that are driving in slow traffic saying, "Hey, maybe I'd rather do that." You know, you need to put it right there where they can see it. And it's actually, uh, you got the right of ways that you can utilize. You don't have to take away space, you know, red or, uh, right of ways or, or residential areas or commercial space. And like, like this article of, uh, February 14th, uh, The Daily Breeze, uh, February 14th, a good, uh, you can check it out, uh, on, uh, you know, the, on the website and all that. And another much more extensive article, uh, of, uh, February the 17th, From Disneyland to China, the Monorail Has Been Successful, but, uh, and that, uh, check it out. It's a very big read, but, uh, it really says, you know, that we can really do this. And it, and this is what's really interesting is that you can do this in one-third the amount of time, uh, building a monorail and at one-third the cost, uh, of the conventional rail that is out there right now. And, uh, so I hope that those that are representative of us on the transportation committees, uh, you know, county, state, uh, or federal, that, uh, we pursue this angle. Uh, I think this would be, uh, something really fantastic. It's very futuristic, uh, and would really elevate, you might say, our city, county, and, and state as a whole. So at that, I shall say thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, sir, for expressing your concern. Um, Mr. Sergeant Arms, there was, um, so there was somebody who was going to approach the council. They had filled one of these out. I think the Sergeant of Arms has it. If you have it, if you could, uh, pass it along? No, not now, ma'am. Is, has it coolly to get turned into? Cause I'd like to take a look at it and read it. Oh, so, okay. I don't see it here. So if we can track that down because that's for the... For the handicap spot? Do we have that? Okay, alright. Okay, ma'am, thank you. Uh, if there's something you'd like to address the council, please come up. Okay, next. I'm going to ask, uh, anybody wishing to address the council just needs to line up and, um, you get to address the city councils, no problem. Everybody gets an opportunity to speak, okay? Um, I'll, I'll let you go ahead and I got a couple of other cards. Go ahead, sir. How you doing?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. My name is Alaric Simon, uh, resident of Hawthorne, been in the city, uh, was born and raised in Hawthorne since 1970. Uh, coming to you on behalf of the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club. I'm the current president of the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club and the organization has been in the community for 80 years. It's an honor to serve at this position. Uh, I'll be brief. I just have like three points I wanted to make. This last Thursday, we had our 82nd Annual Student Speaker Competition. And we participate this, uh, every year. And this time we had two participants from the Hawthorne Math and Science Program. And they have been one of our major supporters for the past couple of years, providing us speakers. And the good thing is, is they, they get exposure, they get an opportunity to win a little money for just participating and get a chance to, uh, further their speaking skills. This year it was a guy named Christian Alexander Ngifty Atunga who participated. Christian Alexander, he was the winner. So he will move forward to the zone competition. The good thing about the whole program is that if they are able, they, they win a cash prize each time they advance. And if they do win, they can win as much as 21, 20-some thousand dollars towards their, uh, education. So, uh, I'll be back before the council to let you know when we will have our zone competition. Um, the next thing is we're having, um, May 6th, our first golf tournament, celebrity golf tournament at the, uh, Chester Washington Golf Course. So I just would like to invite everybody and, uh, just let everybody know about that. So we're gonna be, we're planning to do a lot of things in reference into the city and reference to all kind of healthcare types of issues. Cause I suffer from diabetes. My mother, she was a cancer survivor. And so we're gonna use this platform to be able to get in the community and do more health fairs and do everything that we can to help bring, um, a lot more health to our, our city. And my last point is I was very moved last meeting when, uh, the notion was pushed forward for Hawthorne to be recognizing Black History Month. By me being a, a product of Hawthorne and playing football in the Hawthorne Junior All-American Football since the early 70s. Like 76 is when I started playing. So I've been at Hawthorne High School for many years. That's where a lot of my history and growing up, I spent many weekends at Hawthorne High School. Uh, and I would like to, uh, suggest that we start, the city of Hawthorne can recognize some of the talent because I don't think we understand, it, it's not public knowledge how much talent has come out of Hawthorne. So a person like Ice Cube, he played for the Hawthorne Junior All-American, uh, David Williams, DJ Pooh. So in the future, I would like to present something to honor the talent that has come through the city. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Simon, three second. Uh, can you tell them the, uh, the stu, this, the student speaker, uh, what was the topic? Because it was a very interesting...
The topic this year was freedom of the press. What does it mean? And both of them spoke really well, uh, in reference to their perspective on how it was an amendment and how it has grown and how it's being played out right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Um, I still have three cards, so we're gonna do the three cards first, Ms. Williams. Alright, this is the same topic, I believe. Kamran Saleem? Um, Abu Sidik and Randy Kunst. I don't know if you guys are all here together. If you'd like to group this all as one group, um, one presentation, you guys can, all three of you guys can come up here. Okay, if you guys are part of the same, uh, group, okay?
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome, sir.
Resident of Hawthorne, uh, between Yukon and Corn Bloom, 144th Place. Uh, our concern, the whole neighborhood is, uh, parking. Uh, we're having a lot of issues with parking in our block. People that actually live on the block is not able to actually get parking for their own cars. We're having to go to, sometimes three blocks away just to park the cars. Uh, due to that, there's a lot of random cars being parked every day. Every week we see some random car that we haven't seen before. Uh, they're parking from sometimes three, four blocks away because their area is not safe to be parked at. They're scared for their cars, so they come park in our areas. And because of that, we don't get the parking that we deserve being a resident of that block. And our, my mom is sick, she has cancer. My uncle has, uh, dialysis. He has a pipe on his stomach. There shouldn't be walking two, three blocks away just to get to the car to go to doctor's appointment. That's something that we should have first priority on our block. We've been trying to get permanent parking. I think this is our third petition that we have turned in. First two, we really didn't get a right answer for. It was just denied. So we don't see why we're getting denied when one block away from us, which is 144th, uh, street, they have permit parking. Behind us, Corn Bloom, they have permit parking. So I don't see why we're the only ones that really don't have it. And on Yukon, right next to our block, there's apartment buildings. So of course there's never enough parking for those apartment cars. So they always gotta, they choose our street first because we're the closest to them. And then they go to the neighbors. So we're having a lot of issues with parking. Uh, we should, I feel like we should have the first priority over our neighborhood. Uh, people leave one car, come pick up the other one. They do it like that. They only move it once a week just for, uh, street cleaning. So which, in my opinion, we have been dealing with this for a long, long time. Each household that I went to, to get the signature from, was actually happy that something is being done about it, that we are getting signatures and it's an issue in every house of that block. So it's not only us. So that's our concern. So that's our main concern. Uh, this is our third time that we turned in, like I said.
144th Place.
I'm not too sure why we are not being dealt with seriously. Just because second time we turned it in, they denied us. And this is the third time. And so I don't, it's either, we don't, if we don't get permanent parking, it would be fair if we just take off the permanent parking from the, our next block and behind our block. Just so we have more, they have more flexible that they can park there and in our block. So I just feel unfair for our block. Thank you.
Okay, your comments are duly noted, sir. So we'll, we'll talk to our city attorney and our city manager. The same item, sir? Or we'd like to speak additionally? Go ahead, sir. Uh, what is your name, sir?
Randy Kunst.
Oh, nice to meet you, sir. Go ahead.
Pleased to meet you guys. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and the rest of the council. Uh, he, he reiterated a lot of things there, but, uh, I'm just running out a little couple of facts to you guys. Uh, on Yukon, which runs, uh, north and south is, we tee into it. In Yukon, right where we're at, we, we have multi-unit complexes, uh, totaling of 95 units. Right now currently, there's also a new one under construction which will house 11 more units. And we all know that although they have a single garage, a lot of houses because of the economy, people have to work, two, two housed, two people have to have, have cars. Their kids go to college, go to school, whatever. So just the logistics of that is an issue right there by the numbers alone. But real quick about our street, uh, we run east and west and between Yukon and Corn Bloom is what's in question. We have 11 houses per side. That's 22 total. And that's counting the corner ones, which also face Corn Bloom and Yukon. On each four, each of those corners, there are two, there are red zones. So that eliminates space. And then what we've, what we have, if we have eight single entry driveways on our street and five double entry driveways. So if you, in your mind, you image that and see what's left for the curb, that's what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the residents from all the complexes and all the other neighborhoods around. And one of our biggest violators, I'm gonna call it that, and it's, it's, and I have no problem against, uh, people doing well and affording bigger cars and vans and stuff. But there's a complex on Rosecrance in Yukon, across the street from the McDonald's there. They have subterranean parking, which doesn't allow for some of those bigger vehicles. Hence, they come looking at our street because we're the closest one. And then they don't move for three, four days at a time. We have street sweepers twice a week, flip-flopping sides. So everybody has to jockey for position on the other side. So I'm just trying to give you an image of what we're dealing with. I've been in the city since I went to Yukon Intermediate, went to Losinger, 70, graduated '73. I've seen a large transformation of the, the city. I got nothing against prosperity, but, uh, we have to be considerate of the people that are actually living there, uh, full-time, long-time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to address the city council? Please form a line. Commissioner?
Thank you, Councilman, to the, to the rest of the council. Um, I have a question. Saturday, I love going to Holly Park. And we are thankful because I can stand at Wilton Place and see all the way down the Betness and you don't see a car. So thank you whoever the ones that designed Holly Park. It's planted, planted space, you know, when there's a visitor because it's the car on the street. But anyway, that's not, and again, I want to thank you all. We had a fire last night in our building at Castmere and Imperial. And the fire department was really good because we have about six businesses in there. And they lost the cleaners, but I'm sure they, you know, the power's off. We're gonna be able to save, I think, most of those buildings. And, uh, thank you for the cooperation. I know they called the heads of the church, which are women now, came out and they talked to them to let them know that we had our manager there, that they called him to let him know what is going on. So the building now is boarded up. Uh, they're just across the street from the church. They're on their corner. The church owns that property. They're on that business area and the home behind it. But they did tell us that it was an electrical fire. So we'll know more about it. But thank you for the response that came so quickly to save the building. At least we didn't lose the whole building. I don't know until, you know, the inspectors and everything come out to tell us what is going to have to be done. Thank you again. But going home in the park the other day, they had a man there with a barbecue pit selling his barbecue. Are you allowed to do that? I know last council meeting, they did say you can walk the streets with your push carts and, well, actually you get a health department. But I think it's gonna have to be looked into because that can get out of hand. It's where, you know, it smells good, it looks good. I wanted to buy it, but then I didn't want to patronize something that I felt was illegal. So I think, uh, you know, you all send someone up there in that park. I know you have cameras for the thugs, but it's more happening in that park than thugs, okay? So we'd love to keep Holly Park, believe me. It is, like Carol said, it's a very good neighborhood. You can walk. But again, I have another complaint. Please get something to stop those cars on Wilton Place. Otherwise, you will see where they will have ran in my bedroom and run over me. That is a speed demon there going down that street. Put something there to stop those cars. It's something about those stop signs says, "Get faster." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and the new incoming, uh, city manager and everyone. Letael Williams here, proud citizen of the city of Hawthorne. I would like to, uh, thank the... I would like to, uh, thank the, uh, principal, madam principal from, uh, Hawthorne High. I've, uh, served on the board for, uh, four years over there and I've been asking her since she came into the community and took over the, uh, principal's position, to come and make herself known. So it was good to see her here, and I want to applaud them for bringing on the, uh, eight-period, uh, bell to have the students to catch up in their, uh, lacking curriculums because all the other, uh, Centinela Valley District School had these. And I wanted to make mention, it's been very frigid out here. I hope our seniors are staying warm and, uh, a lot of them are saying they're on programs. And I wonder if our, uh, housing department have, uh, an emergency number that, uh, if your, if your, uh, utilities or your, uh, system is broken down, somehow you could get some heat because, uh, frigid, frigid weather, people do lose their life. And it's been very, very cold here, even though we're here in the South Bay, it's been very, very cold. And I would like to make, make mention, we appreciate you, city attorney. After the last meeting, you know, sometime when they see you, uh, frequently, the meetings, they, uh, see you out in the community and they have questions, they have questions. And they wanna know, uh, are these guidelines being really, really, uh, enforced? And so, uh, to see the city attorney brush up some things from, uh, last meeting is really being applauded and I'm quite sure that our citizens of the city of Hawthorne, of the neighbors, will see that because this meeting is really watched all over the place. They, they log in and they pull it up and the city of Hawthorne is a really multi-melting pot, growing city. And for its parking, everybody is coming home. You have college students coming home, you have a lot of people moving into our community. Our community is really growing, our streets are paved, oh, so beautiful. Our benches are so beautiful, I applaud the, uh, department that's put the right monies to work to make our city very beautiful, the streets are paved. And you're gonna have a lot of over-parking, you gotta have a lot of over-parking. And lastly, but not least, ilotes, ilotes, tamale, tamales. Let's not let our city be the last one to pass the bill for these vendors. You've been having vendors, I could go after school, ilotes is the best thing for kids to buy, there's some french fries. We got everybody on this board that come from somewhere. When you go all over the world, you've got street vendors. You got street vendors in Portuguese, Mexico, Cuba, Lebanon, all over the world, Jamaica too. Please, pass the bill, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the city council? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed order. Thank you, um, Mr. City Attorney, you had a letter here for me to sign? Is that, uh, is that the case?
Uh, that goes with resolution number eight zero five five, item number ten.
Excellent, and I'm gonna take that one out of order. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I have five items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, the city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item ten, resolution number eight zero five five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California opposing Senate Bill fifty, equitable communities incentive. Item eleven, resolution number eight zero five three, a resolution of the city coun- city council of the city of Hawthorne, California designating a hundred and forty-fourth place, Corn Blume Avenue and Yukon Avenue as a preferential parking district. Item twelve, resolution number eight zero five four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California announcing free income tax preparation services on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays, March twelfth, twenty nineteen through April thirteenth, twenty nineteen, at the Hawthorne Senior Center as part of the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program for adoption.
I make a motion to approve all items with the exception of item ten.
Second.
Was, was that your second, sir, or? Okay, so I made the motion, so that was an official second. Okay. Please vote. Okay.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, item number ten. Folks, I really want you guys to pay attention out there, we have a constant, constant parade of like concerned citizens. Why do I say that? Because everybody's asking for preferential parking. We're not gonna be able to issue it, because guess what? The preferential parking, uh, that you get is gonna affect a couple of streets over. We did it today, because yours has been a long outstanding issue, right? We recognize that. But we can't just keep doing it because it gets passed on to the different streets, et cetera. Um, this is, I mean, without, this is a problem that's been forty, fifty years in the making. Sir, you've been here with Losinger High School, you went to school. You saw how those apartments across the street, across Rosecrans from you, have been developed. Approved and approved and approved, more and more. So little by little, that's been carrying over into Bodger Park, you're in Bodger Park, right? So, what I'm trying to say is that, um, it's a problem that's forty or fifty years in the making, it's hard to turn around. And now, I really want you guys to pay attention. You know, you, right now you guys came and asked for this, I don't want you guys to go away. Okay, I want you to be part of a group that's formally advocating against some of the stuff that Sacramento's pushing for right now. Do you realize that the now, they're, what they're trying to do up in Sacramento through our governor and, and his associates up there? They're trying to say that it's okay for people to bring, build in their garages for, uh, to build a res- a residence inside their houses. I mean, what kind of stuff is that? So now you're gonna ask us to like try to resolve a situation when we got our own state government, that's, uh, that's the current that we're working against? I want you guys to be vigilant. I don't want just people coming to complain and ask for, for the preferential parking over and over and over, 'cause we're not gonna grant it. At some point, we just can't do it because it's a problem that we're spreading, passing on to the street over and then everybody's upset at us. Which you should be upset is the people you guys elect into the state office, 'cause they're the ones that are like pushing for some of this stuff. So that's one of them, they're allowing, um, for people to, they want to allow. And we need to fight that, that's where you need to be part of it. Okay, because in Ramona, and like you think it's nice right now, Holly Park, you think it's right, nice right now? Once this goes through, you can't, you won't be able to come and complain to us if this thing gets passed when people, your neighbors have like a family living in their garage. And then two more cars on the street. That's what's gonna happen. Everything you have is gonna double or triple. Be very vigilant, Holly Park ain't gonna be the same anymore. Uh, Holly Glen is not gonna be the same, or, we're not gonna be able to protect Holly Glen either. Alright? Because the state government's pushing for what they wanna do. And this genius, quote, quote unquote genius, Scott Weiner, he's trying to say that it's okay to build, uh, high-density housing and allowing developers to come in with, you know, over the, over the counter, apply for these permits to build, uh, ninety to a hundred, uh, unit buildings on single, on one acre. I mean, just imagine that stuff. Okay, so I really want you guys to be vigilant about it, and I'm always, you know, you guys know I've always been against high-density housing because it's senseless in the city of Hawthorne. And there was, there was administrations before us and planning directors that sold us out. I really wanted to, I, I wanna direct, um, not direct right now, but I wanna have the conversation where this city council and this community is going to fight the RENA numbers that we've been associat- uh, that we've been given. How could it be that Rancho Palos Verdes, Rancho Palos Verdes is about sixteen square miles, we're six square miles. They have about ten RENA numbers, ten to twenty RENA numbers that they're, they're supposed to only accommodate in their city, ten units, ten to twenty units of, uh, low to moderate income housing. They're supposed to make that available. Why do we have like a thousand to like twelve-hundred that we've been assigned? Over there, how much land do they have over there, privileged people up there? Why do they get to only have ten or twenty units that they have to build for? All those cities up on the hill have that same situation. The beach cities too have gotten away from it. Why do we have to have a thousand, two thou- like twelve-hundred and fourteen-hundred units? You're right. And then we got people, we have people that are complaining because the apartments that we do have, they're complaining that we're telling them that they have to pick up the trash that they have in front of their, uh, apartments. Even the, even the, you're right, and they, the guy who wrote for me, to me, was from Rancho Palos Verdes. Sitting nice and comfortably, I think you probably know who I'm talking about. So...
I know, but that's...
I'm sorry if you guys see, hear me in passion, but this is the thing I've always passionate, I always hear people coming up here. But then I don't see people coming up when I'm telling you guys this stuff to kind of, uh, to fight this fight against the state government. We have a really valid argument that we can make as to why we've been indiscriminately been assigned these RENA numbers compared to all these other cities that have land masses that are equal to or larger than us. You guys see, see what I'm saying? Why is that city really gonna have twenty units? Because they have people over here in the audience that are like complaining, "No, not in my backyard, dimby." So I just really want you guys to be aware that, um, I'm not upset at you guys for coming up, I'm sorry, I, 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 I feel your concern. We sense it all, it's hard for me to find parking. But, we need to actively fight this and we're gonna have, I'll probably have an item to discuss this as a council as to how we're gonna combat this. We're gonna have some data that compares our city with regards to the RENA numbers, uh, to the different cities around us. And to, to fight back, whoever it is, SCAG that assigned it, or the previous numbskulls that we had as planning directors that just sold our city out and just didn't fight anything? Just let the damn numbers be assigned to us like nothing? While these other cities fought a good fight and kept their numbers really low. Do you guys feel me when I say that? You guys understand? We got, we're running against the current here, which is our state government that is, you know, pushing up into a situation that we're not gonna be able to get on, in front of.
Right.
So, um, excuse me for, it's a very passionate thing that I feel about and, uh, I really am concerned, just like, uh, the mayor Proten, go ahead, ma'am.
Through the chair, thank you. Um, so SB fifty, and you're going to see some of, something else on the agenda tonight, which is also another attempt for the state legislator, legislature to impose its will on the city's any road local control. So, in most cities cases, cities would no longer be able to block new apartment buildings within a half mile of public transit. Now, I supported the Green Line Mixed Use Specific Plan because it was specific to that location and I specified that it was a one-time measure and it was not appropriate for other neighborhoods. But it also was an example of our city being able to control the development, our own development. So in that particular neighbor, which, neighborhood which was across the street and is across the street from SpaceX and a half mile from the Green Line, it was appropriate to approve, um, an apartment complex, a, a denser comp- apartment complex in that location. It is not appropriate to approve it in some other locations where the apartment, uh, complexes are already there and, and, and the, uh, density is, is, is already very heavy in, in the air, many areas. But, our ability to control where we develop is being taken away from us. This is very critical. And again, as the mayor has said, we don't hear from the citizens, you have to fight back on these things. We can't fight the fight for you. All we can do is send our letters and say we oppose it and hope that we can, there will be enough cities, because there will be other cities opposing this as well. Hope that there will be another, enough other cities opposing it as well. But we can't fight for you, you have to make your voice heard to the people you elected in Sacramento. And again, so, so, so I add my voice to, um, opposition, uh, to res- uh, the resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, which opposes Senate Bill fifty. I add my voice to that.
Through the chair.
Yeah, okay. Who, me, okay. Just for the public, we talking about, uh, item ten on your agenda, okay? It's a resolution that we're talking about, that is a state Senate Bill fifty that these two senators put together, like the mayor said and the mayor Proten just said it. But, just to let you know that Ms. Valentine and I confront Steve Bradford, uh, about a month ago, uh, when we went to this legislative breakfast, about this, about this bill. Because, because he's in favor of it. So, we confront him because like the mayor said, our Hawthorne, our RENA numbers is, you know, tenfold from, from these other cities. So we cannot afford to build no more apartment buildings in the city of Hawthorne. Like I told you guys, uh, before, I support townhouse, condominium for sale, but no more apartments. So this thing here now have the support of the, uh, new governor, Newsom, that is going to dictate that we're gonna, they have to build apartments. So they can come here to us like mayor said, and say, "Oh, the state have gave me green light, so who cares about the city council or the city planning laws? We're going to do it because the state said it." So the state is putting this mandate on us, like Ms. Valentine said, it's a lot of things coming from the state that we have to be vigilant and we have to make phone calls. We have to lobby these people because our representative that, that represents this South Bay and Hawthorne is already out there getting bad with some other people to go vote yes on this bill. Because this bill have not passed yet. It's still in discussion in the senate, but it's gonna go to the floor and then the governor has said he will sign it. Okay, so that's why we need to stop them, thank you.
You're next, though, but just, go ahead, go ahead.
This, uh, also indicates that you can build up to eight stories, if I'm not, if I read it correctly. That, uh, you can, if you're close to the Green Line Metro Station, then you can, within a certain distance of that, you can go to eight stories high on the premise that people that live next to the metro don't have cars. You know, which is ridiculous, 'cause California has a culture of cars. You're never gonna not have people with cars. And so, just the idea that you can build a monster like that is crazy. If, if you, uh, Torrance doesn't have any metro stations, Manhattan Beach doesn't. Uh, a lot of these other cities don't have a metro station in their cities. So they probably wouldn't have to worry about that. Then they're talking about a bus stop, if you have, you know. So, they're just looking for different ways to build an eight-story building. Packed to the brim with people, you know, and, um, I, 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 I just don't see that in our city, we really, we really need that. You know, so, yeah, I would, you know, if you don't, you know, you either argue, you do something about it now or, uh, it's gonna just get worse because, um, you know, we don't, we can't solve everybody's problem, you know. It's, uh, you know, anyway, I, that eight-story is what caught my attention. And the fact that Gardena has one, Hawthorne has one, uh, you know, all around here, we have a lot of stops.
Oh, we have more than one.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a bunch of huge skyscrapers, you know? And we don't, we don't need that.
And, one of the things too that you, you didn't catch on this is that it's not just limited to the metro stations. Any transportation corridor.
Right, right, right.
That means aviation over here in Holly Glen, Rosecrans, right, like in Bodger Park, Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, sure, it might, there might be the limits on this, on how high these things are gonna be, but it's gonna allow for the high-density apartment buildings to be built. And that, they'll force us to change, rezone our, so whatever you guys have over there in Holly Glen or in Holly Park, uh, R1, will change because of this, because they'll demand it, because we're not making it the land available. Because there's gonna be a corridor over which it's gonna be allowed. So they'll automatically force us to change our zoning for us. So Holly Glen will not be what it is anymore and Holly Park will not be what it is anymore. Go ahead, sir, you got some statistics, tell us.
Actually, uh, you know, this bill actually, it, to me is a fraud, 'cause to tell you the truth, the statistics have showed that this transit-oriented project, they said that people is gonna take the metro and buses and stuff, it's a lie. Because only four percent of the people who have lived in this transit-oriented project, four percent, four, is the one who take the transit. Everybody have cars and drive. So it's a false promise. Because they talking about, "Oh, because California needs affordable housing." But that's not the way to solve the affordable housing.
Mr. City Attorney, um, one of the first steps is to, um, I'm gonna just pose this to my council members since we're on the item and we're talking about this. We have a letter that we're going to, that I'm gonna sign on behalf of the city. Is this something, a couple of questions. Is this something that we could post on the internet for the residents to see?
Yes.
Okay, so once I sign this, if you could, uh, two things. If you could like scan this and post it on our website right on the front so the residents could see what kind, what letter of opposition we did? If you could also give me like, uh, uh, like a text, like what you call the, the word version so I could use the lettering? So I could, uh, uh, post it on my, uh, social media and anybody here who wants to?
Yes, and could, could you also give it, send it to me as well, thank you for the same reason.
On that, and then, what other? On that, and then what other thing could we do to, does, does anybody here have any ideas where we can have our, our state senator here so we can talk to him? We can put him, we could put him on blast as to why he's supporting this. We wanna find out what his thinking is. When we call him, when, when it comes to election time, he comes and looks and asks us for endorsements. Chasing us like, I don't know, like crazy. Yeah, chasing a rabbit. But when it comes time to this type of stuff, we can't even reach him, guy having to return a phone call. I would think that Assemblywoman Burke would be more, uh, you know, conducive to meeting with us. What can we do, Mr. City Attorney? Or what do you guys think? Let's just, what can we do to kind of get them to?
We can ask both of them to come in because if Burke, Autumn Burke, have, I have never seen her here. She have never show up in no event in city of Hawthorne, maybe one or two. At least if Bradford comes once a year to give us an update. But Autumn Burke? No.
Sure, we're turning our calls, but, uh, we need to have her come.
We have to make, may, maybe bring them both over here and listen what we have to say and bring all the neighborhood association with force people to show them that, okay? If you do, if you vote on this, next election you'll be out.
Through the chair. This, this isn't the only thing we need to have them coming on. We've got, we've got something else coming on the agenda about sidewalk vendors. I'd like to hear them, hear what they have to say about that as well. I mean, this is, this is, this is the tip of the iceberg. There's, there are a lot of bills that are in Sacramento that will erode local control if they, if they pass.
The sidewalk vendors will be able to travel through our neighborhoods. Again, it's like Holly Park, I mean, look, it's, it's cool and everything, I like my lotus too, but under certain conditions, someone like at a store that like, I know it's gonna be safe. Uh, but again, like, uh, do you guys realize, let me repeat it again, listen to what I'm saying. These sidewalk vendors are going to be able to apply for a, a license and go through any of your neighborhoods. And you're gonna get cranky people calling us up and telling us off, "Why you allow this?" And they're gonna blame us. It's not us, it's the state government that's allowing for it. That would allow for it. Go ahead, sir.
And we cannot deny them, okay? Because actually, the law took effect was January first. That is where we were trying to pass this emergency resolution ordinance to regulate some of those activities. But it's already passed, the state said, January first, two thousand nineteen, they can start selling on the streets.
So it's already gonna happen.
So we had to vote on this and bring it back so we can be able to regulate a little bit of it. But we cannot deny them because then they can, you know, sue us, for example.
You got something?
You know, I, I was gonna suggest have a, a town meeting and have, or let's just go see them.
Uh, I think we need to put them on camera, man.
Yeah.
I think we need to have a town hall here.
Yeah.
In the city of Hawthorne that's televised live and repeated over and over and over.
Special guest is Bradford.
We'll advertise it.
And Autumn Burke.
Yeah. And if they don't show up, then, uh...
We'll report that as well.
Yeah. So I, I think that...
That's reportable, too.
I think that would be the way to do that. Put a little pressure on them.
All right.
Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, can you just kinda help us lay out something for that? Like the, I mean, you got something else? All right, nobody else want to say anything? Okay.
Can we subpoena them?
Maybe April meeting.
Maybe we can subpoena them, you know?
All right, folks.
Okay.
Um, all right, so I'm, I signed this letter in opposition, here you go. All right, so that's gonna be sent and we're gonna, uh, we're gonna vote on approving to send it, if you guys are okay with that.
Yes.
Please vote. Raise, uh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
He needs to read it.
Run again?
Just read it again if you could, just to make sure.
Item, item number ten, resolution number eight zero five five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, opposing Senate Bill fifty, equitable communities incentive.
Please vote.
Can I have a question, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, to Russell, uh, it's more effective if only the mayor sign or all of us should have signed this letter? What's the, where's the?
Oh, I can easily just, uh, change it and, uh, add all of, a signature line for all of you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't think it would be much more powerful.
Yeah, I think so.
Right, thank you, Phil.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, um, yeah, with the interdiction issue, that it's going to be everybody signing it. How quickly can we get that thing ready to sign?
After the meeting, I'll run back to my office and do it.
Okay, all right, cool. And then we'll wait, if everybody can please wait.
It wasn't second, second.
I made the motion? This is, oh, second.
Second.
Uh, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, folks, appreciate that. Um, where are we at? Item thirteen?
Public reading. All right. Item thirteen, now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt resolution number eight zero five two, establishing the city sidewalk vending permit fee. City clerk department's declaration publication fi- filed, no re-ink communications were received.
Anybody have any comments on this?
I'd like to, I'd like to have a discussion on that.
Yeah, please go ahead.
So can, can we take thirteen and eighteen together because they're so, they're so closely related?
Uh, eighteen's not a public hearing, so I would just keep them separate.
Okay. All right, so, um, well, this is establishing the vending fee and probably we'd have, wind up with the same discussion for eighteen as well. But again, this is one of the many measures being moved along by the legislature to erode local con- erode local control. We have many small businesses.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think what should proceed is the, um, the comment, public comment, and then we need to, so that'd be correct order. Is anybody wishing to speak on item thirteen? If not, I'll declare the public comment.
I think he wants to speak on it.
Sir? Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, Gordon Michael Migo, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, really kind of, in a way, aghast at, uh, you know, this, uh, you know, state legislation that was enacted and signed by the governor. It was really without any real serious thought about the repercussions that, uh, would follow. Because when we're talking about, you know, the proliferation of, uh, street vendors in all those varied forms, I mean, look at all the different businesses, whether they're, uh, large ones or small mom and pops, uh, who are, uh, dealing with paying the cost of being in brick and mortar stores, you know, the, the, you know, the license fees and, and, uh, utilities, you name it. And you can have these street vendors are gonna undercut them and probably, uh, have similar kind of, uh, products that they'll be, uh, selling in front of these businesses. I know the city of Los Angeles, uh, is dealing with that there and they, uh, before the end of last year, they, uh, laid out the groundwork and, and you might wanna kind of visit that, you know, what they were doing. Uh, but, you know, the idea of, uh, those vendors, uh, you know, going through residential neighborhoods, you know, just doesn't sit well with, I think, most people and really don't want that. Uh, and, 'cause I've, I've known some that, uh, uh, would go through, uh, some different neighborhoods and the people think, "Wow, we're, we're getting some, a taste of, uh, home from, you know, uh, from where we came." But it turns out, some of them ended up getting sick and going to hospitals because, uh, the, the food that was contaminated and, and, uh, or, or for whatever reason, you know? And, uh, now, under the state legislation, that the, the only criteria that the cities can basically use is like, uh, you know, health, safety, and, uh, one other thing, you know? And it, it's very limited, you know, as far as what the cities can do. And, and they really were trying to keep the cities, uh, uh, from making any real changes by giving them a very quick cutoff date, which was actually December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. But, uh, uh, I guess there wasn't enough protest saying, "Hey, we, we can't make these changes in such a short time," you know? And, uh, so, and then, of course, uh, it's always been prohibited, you know, vendors, you know, going through parks 'cause even my time with the city and all that, uh, we had to shoot the people away. Uh, we had to say, "If you wanna do it, you do it out on the public sidewalks," you know? And, uh, and I says, and there was, uh, basically you had various food trucks and all that. And so you have a lot of, uh, people that are, I know, trying to make a few bucks here and there, but, you know, we just can't turn this into a third world, you know, kind of a nation, you know, where everybody just, uh, proliferates all over the place. Uh, it's, it's not good.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to comment on this? All right.
Thank you for the opportunity, Lethell Williams here, yes. Vending have been going on for many, many years. This is just a thing of like they doing with, uh, medical marijuana, making it legal, getting a permit for it to do it the right way. It has been going on for a very, very long time. And as I was saying, as you travel the world, Brazil, anywhere you go, there's a street vendor. Now, it won't take away from the establishments that's gotta have a permit and be, uh, health, health-wise with it, as well with a grade A or B or whatever you, they may have. This is making it legal for them. They have to have a permit to do it now. They've been doing it for so long. You tell me, people that's been walking around with the corn, walking around with, uh, I don't know about selling barbecue in the park, but get a permit to do it 'cause you have to go through some health criteria. So come on, let's, let's not forget where we come from. We all Americanized now, give me a break.
Thank you for your opinion. Go ahead, anybody else? Okay. Oral communication on this item is closed. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay. So again, this is one of the many measures being moved along by the legislature to erode local control and take it away from the cities of their ability to control their own streets. We have many small businesses that operate on a very thin margin of resources. And this is the problem with Sacramento, um, uh, passing from on high its resolutions to affect all the cities. Our city is not the same as Rancho Palos Verdes or, or the same as El Segundo even. Our businesses operate on a very thin margin of resources. We have to comply with the state law. We have a very limited ability to restrict street vendors. If the street vendors choose to come, to, to, uh, locate in front of a store that's having a very hard time managing and, 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 um, and, um, a, a very hard time making a good living, that street vendor could very easily cut into that store's profits and ma- and push, push that, that store. The store has to pay rent, the street vendor doesn't have to pay rent. The store has to pay rent and it has to pay its employees. And so it's, it, if it's operating on a very thin margin, having street vendors in front of it could cause it to go out of business. So our, we have a lot of businesses that are very thinly capitalized. Now, we can only regulate the time, place, and manner in which sidewalk vendor vending is conducted. That's what, um, Mr. Migo said and that's correct. And then only if those restrictions are limited to health, safety, or welfare concerns. We are not in a position to stop this. And so I, so when the, when the street vendors pu- pull up in front of your house or in front of your, your business, we can't help you, we can't stop it. So I'm saying to you that we have to push back against this in the only way we can. We can write letters and we can, and we can encourage you to write letters. But I'm also asking businesses to make your voice heard to your representatives in Sacramento. In other cities, a lot of the businesses make their voices heard in Sacramento. Our businesses have not had a tendency to do that, but I think you'll find that it's time to do that. And if you, if as the result of this ordinance, your business is negatively impacted, I would urge you to contact your representatives in Sacramento and ask for relief from this ordinance. This is something that did not have to be passed. And, um, and I, and, and I think if there's enough pushback from localities, and I think there probably will be a lot, they may find, they may reverse it. So I'm, I, they, Sacramento operates, Sacramento does respond to pressure. So if there's enough pressure against this, they could very well reverse it. But they're going to have to hear from you guys, from, from the vendors, from the, from the businesses, from the people who this is affecting. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, is South Bay Cog, League of California Cities, SCAG, are all those three entities?
We're waiting, yes.
Uh, against this and are they going to be, uh...
Well, I'm a member of, of South Bay Cog, we are, I, I think we are going to oppose it. This all has to be done at a board meeting, but yes, I'm sure we're going to oppose it, yes. And then, and, and the league, um, I don't know about the league as lea-, but again, they have to hear from the cities. Once they start hearing from the cities, those organizations will also add their voices, yes. I'm su- I'm certain they, I don't wanna predict, but I, I'm pretty sure they will.
Um, could we, Mr. City Attorney, could we kind of sort of, uh, tran- uh, edit this to, uh, direct, to ask for the South Bay, uh, Cog's official support as a city body?
Uh, well, you already adopted the emergency, the urgency ordinance. So it's in effect and we need to have the, the fee approved by the city council at this point. At this point, we, I don't believe we even have anybody applying for a permit. So we may be getting, uh, worried about nothing at this point.
No, exactly, exactly. Because once somebody applies for it, who's going to police this? Who's going to go chase down and see, "Can I see your permit?" Do we have an, are we gonna have a plan, uh, chief, to be able to have like a de- a detail, uh, going, like to one or two people that we're going to pay to go, uh, and check people's permits? What, code enforcement? Are we gonna hire more code enforcement? Could we, from these permit, uh...
No, sir, no. There is no money to hire more people, uh, because, uh, this is a separate issue. We lost half of our code enforcement funding already.
I'm sorry to hear that. Exactly. How did, who's going to see if these people have like a health permit? Who's going to see if they have a valid permit? Once you see one, every, all these other people from wherever they come from are gonna get excited and put their carts. Because it's gonna be a cat and mouse game, we're, we're not gonna be able to stop every single one and figure out who's legit and who's not. These people up there in their fancy little complexes that they live, Kai Rice condos that they live up there, the governor and this idiot wiener, they have no clue how it's gonna impact the community because who's going to police this? It's code enforcement. Now we'd see, find that we don't have money for that. I mean, I, it keep this, um, thought in the air that if we get permit fees, that I don't know if that'll be able to hire a whole, like, uh, a team of people, one or two people, but if there's sufficient amount of permit fees that come in for this stuff and business license taxes for this, that maybe that could pay for the people, uh, to police this, the code enforcement personnel.
Uh, they aren't even issued a permit unless they show, uh, the requisite approvals from the county health department, state board of equalization for a seller's permit, and they also need to take out application for a business license. And they have to post all of the approvals on their card itself.
I know, I know, Mr. City Attorney, but like if, I appreciate that, thank you. But if you have been to the St. Joseph's Carnival, you know, they, they start, a whole, whole bunch of these people selling out of the carts, tamales and all this food. I know you like your food, Mr. Williams, but, you know, maybe it's, the, the time will come where you're gonna get sick. Let me just tell you, it's gonna come soon. And where you're gonna get sick and we're not gonna be able to police. So once at, at the St. Joseph's Carnival, you get all these people that, we call the police, we can't even get them to scurry them off, selling, they're competing and impacting the amount of, uh, funds, fundraising that the church is having when it comes to their little food vending thing that they have right there.
Yeah, the, the code already provides that, the, the, the people that, uh, sell from their carts aren't allowed to be near closer than two hundred feet from a special event such, such as the St. Joseph's Fair.
I appreciate that, no, I really do. But at the same time, this is opening up a Pandora's box of other problems that we're not gonna be able to get ahead of, that's all I'm trying to say. It's gonna explode, it's gonna be exponential.
Through the chair.
Okay, sir.
I have a question about the, the fees. So I, I wanna understand, for example, uh, because you, uh, the finance department or whatever, come up with is a hundred seventy-five dollar, right? So, uh, that's the, the, the minimum that we can do or can we increase that?
Uh, no, we just are seeking to get reimbursed for staff time in processing the, the application. Uh, code enforcement and the police department are entitled to issue administrative citations. If they already have a permit, the citation is one hundred up to five hundred. If they don't have a permit, the citation is two fifty up to a thousand.
So, so we could not say, for example, increase this number for two seventy-five?
Uh, no, we already did the, uh, calculation and that's how much it would take to actually reimburse us. We're not entitled to make a profit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, folks. All right. We have, we have to vote on it because if we don't do it, it, they think they're all gonna come down and it's gonna be worse. They might impose something that's even more catastrophic for us, just as a punishment.
To the chair, ju- just to clarify something with, 'cause Ms. Valentine said about to oppose, it's not to oppose this law because it's already passed, it's to resend it later on if somebody in Sacramento, like a, a state senator or legislative person, will introduce another bill to resend this bill that was, it took effect on January first, two thousand nineteen.
And from my understanding, the county health department is issuing three-month temporary approvals immediately. And from my understanding, the county health department is issuing three-month temporary approvals immediately.
To the chair. Councilmember, go ahead.
Yeah, just, you know, how does, how does something like this get on, do they have a lobby? You know, they actually have a lobby that would put
Yes.
the, uh, this thing on the books.
There was a lobby, yes.
They probably seduced them with the, the lotus up there. He gave them some, and these guys fell for it.
You know, you're, you're, what you mentioned about putting a business, I was taking a taxi. We had a conversation. He said Uber is killing us. Because in Uber, they don't have to pay all the insurances and all the certifications and everything that we have to. They make anybody a driver. And so that's very true about having a business guy right in front of my business and taking my, you know, what little I got away from me, and all he pays is a dollar seventy, $175, you know? So that is a concern.
Yes, my understanding is that the sidewalk vending lobby was very strong in Sacramento and lobbied the legislators up there to have this passed.
People fell asleep on that one, then.
They fell asleep, and the businesses, which should have been lobbying themselves, did not apparent, were not apparently affected.
Wow. Yeah. So, I didn't realize they were that powerful.
Um, I just think a lot of it was just personal kind of types of thinking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Try to like, change things around with the way they see it fit over there. Since they're not affected by it, by the way. Okay, so what do we get? Resolution number 8052?
Yep. All right.
Did you already read it, sir?
I'm gonna read it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution number 8052. A resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing the city sidewalk vending permit fees for adoption.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Let's retake the vote again. I move, do we have a second? Please vote again.
Second.
Seconded. Please vote once more.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Thank you, folks. Next, please. Fifteen?
Item fifteen, ordinance number 2169. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, enacting chapter 933, repealing chapter 934, enacting 934, repealing chapter 935, enacting chapter 935, repealing chapter 936, enacting chapter 936.
Oh my god.
And enacting chapter 937 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code. Thank you for that.
I sound like you're doing the cha-cha right there.
I was reading bingo.
The cha-cha. Okay. Please, I make the motion.
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Sixteen?
Item sixteen, ordinance number 2171. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending and renaming chapter 5.57 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and enacting chapter 5.57 of the Hawthorne Municipal Code for adoption.
I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes. Item number seventeen, ordinance number 2172. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adding section 2.06025 to chapter two of title two of the Hawthorne Municipal Code related to appointment and term of Mayor Protem for adoption.
Comment? So with the intention that it's a year term, thank you. And that we successively give everybody an opportunity with, I guess it sounds like the next person in line would be Councilmember Montero and Councilmember Talida to follow, okay? With the intention, it's not formal, you know, we're just by the spirit of what we say today, you know, that we try to follow that, okay? I, I make a motion? It's been seconded. Please vote. Sir?
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes. Item number eighteen, ordinance number 2173. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending Hawthorne Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 2.22, Section 2.22, Point 130J for introduction.
I introduce?
It said motion to adopt.
Which one was nine, that was a?
Eighteen.
I'm sorry, I make the motion to approve.
Second.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes. Item number nineteen, ordinance number 2176. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, adding section 12.04.31 to title 12 to chapter 12.04 of the Hawthorne Municipal Regarding Maintenance and Repair of Sidewalks.
I introduce. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have all my consent calendar items, 21 through 24 for approval tonight.
A question on 21 and 22? Are these, is this regular maintenance? Our police gate, the police facility gate, is that not working, or just a simple maintenance?
Yeah, it is broken. So, and it's, it's been there for 14 years. It, it needs to be replaced. And item 22 is an FAA requirement.
Okay. I make the motion on all four items?
Second.
It's, it's been seconded by Councilmember Mike Teyeda. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Elected officials, there's no discussion action items? Elected officials, reports, recommendations? Mr. City Treasurer, David Patterson, sir?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process and making your voices heard. And want to just wish everybody happy Black History Month for the last few days we have of February.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, just have a few things. So first of all, our interns from Santa Monica College started last week. So you'll be seeing them around City Hall. They'll be with us until June. They've already started to scan some of our ordinances. Just, you know, be patient with them, because they just started with the year 1922, so they have about 100 years to go. Yes, they've never been scanned before. Yes.
1922, oh my god.
So next, so we've, we've switched our provider for live streaming videos on the internet from Granicus to Prime Gov. This change, in addition to modifying how to view meeting videos, also changes access to meeting agendas. If anyone has any questions regarding the process, please contact the city clerk's office. I want to thank Diana and Monica for spearheading us through this process. We used the older, older provider for five years, so we ask you to be patient with us through this process. And then last but not least, I just want to give props to the city of Hawthorne in terms of our residents. We received the information in terms of voting from the last election. And when compared to Inglewood, Gardena, and Longdale, Hawthorne had a higher percentage rates of voters in comparison to registered voters. So I just want to thank the city of Hawthorne for going out and vote. And, you know, hopefully we'll continue that momentum for the next election. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Councilmember Mike Teyeda, please.
Well, you know, I, I've been in this city for a long time, and I, I really, it's really wonderful that we celebrate Black History Month, you know? And I think that I was, been watching a lot of documentaries lately. And I remember when I was, I was born in, I mean born, I was raised in, in North Torrance. I graduated from North High. And I thought, when I was 23 years old, that I was gonna get a real estate license and come to work in Hawthorne. That was 1976. I was very idealistic. And my broker, the first thing he said, if you have any blacks and Mexicans, you take them east to prairie. You know? And I thought, wow. Wow. You know, that's really something. It was, it was, it was like throwing cold water on a very idealistic, well, within a short period, I had a real estate office, a bunch of salespeople, black, you know, every color, and we sold real estate everywhere. And so it's, it's amazing how the city has changed. Cause I was 23 when I, when I started. I'm 66 today. I spent all that time in Hawthorne, and I watched the city change. But that was the first thing that I was told by my broker. Take them east to prairie. And I've always wanted to say that. I always wanted to say that in a, in a venue. That, 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 that wasn't that long ago. You know, and the changes that the city's gone through is pretty amazing. And all the, everybody from everywhere, sitting on the council. People from the Middle East, Afro-Americans, Mexican, Cuban. So no, I'm, I'm very, I'm very happy to be a part of this, and I've watched this grow. And, you know, all the great things that we have here in the city. Including there was an article that we are the place to buy a house in California, which is pretty amazing. You know, anyway, that's what I, uh, Black History is, I've been watching a lot of documentaries, and I'm thinking about young black people. I wonder if they know who Medgar Evers was? Or, or the, the young lady that wouldn't give up her seat in the bus?
Rosa Parks.
Or Rosa, no, that, Rosa Parks was, was that Rosa Parks? I thought she was the one that wouldn't give up the, the seat at the counter.
No, that's Rosa Parks on the bus. The bus was Rosa Parks.
Yeah. And so all of these things, you wonder if a, a, a Afro-American young man or girl in their twenties know who these people really were? Malcolm, all of these guys. Yeah, it's, it's a great thing to be able to celebrate Black History in our city. Anyway, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo that with Mike's head about the, you know, the Black History Month. Because you have, actually, you know, at the castle, you know, the kids, the preschools, the three and four-year-olds, they have all these, you know, celebrities, you know, African-American celebrities and Black History Month. And one of the kids, a three-year-old, got a picture of Martin Luther King and said, this is you, Mr. Montero. I said, oh yeah, I'm, no, you know, I'm, really, I'm somebody, right? But it, it was good, you know, to hear the, Mr. Michael Anderson last night to come in, you know, talk about the, the Los Angeles Urban League, because, you know, 90, 98, 99 years in the history. So that was tremendous. So thank you for that. Again, I want to encourage everybody to visit the Michael's Learning Place. Because, you know, they have a quote here, "Changing society perception about people with developmental disability, one cup of coffee at the time." See, that's not beautiful? Changing society perception about people with developmental disability, one cup of coffee at the time. So they locate a right like 4901 West Rose Grant Avenue, Hawthorne, California. Again, 4901 West Rose Grant Avenue. So please visit them and support them. Because, you know, whatever money they make goes to those programs that is very, very, very rewarded. So, also that, I met with Vaughn from the Parks and Recs, and then one of his, his staff, and Doc Kraus. So we talked about April 13, that's gonna be Earth Day, but it's gonna be a tremendous day, April 13, Saturday, April 13, start at 8 o'clock in the morning. Because we're gonna have the bunny breakfast, that is, you know, Easter, right? They're gonna have a lot of stuff, you know, pancake, carnival, inflatable booth, you know, games, face, face painting, egg hunts, puppet show. And then we're gonna have Earth Day, right, from 8 to 1 o'clock. We're gonna have Earth Day in conjunction with the Provider Resource Fair. So that Provider Resource Fair from past councilwoman, Valen, uh, English, is going to continuing. So, but we're gonna call it, you know, the Hawthorne Service Providers Resource Fair with Earth Day and the bunny breakfast. And also inside the Venus Room is gonna be having a Veterans Affairs workshops going on in there. So it's gonna be a lot of activities on April 13. So plan the whole morning to be there. It's after Midas Day. And also be there from nine, from actually, from 8 to 1. So it's gonna be breakfast, it's gonna be lunch, it's gonna be door prizes, bicycles, you know? So a lot of good things is gonna come up. So, so join that, because Vaughn and his staff is doing, and Doc has been doing tremendous work on this one, so I appreciate it. And again, Ms. Valentine and I are gonna go to the South Bay Council of Government 20 Annual General Assembly this Thursday. So we're gonna be there all day to represent the city. I also joined the South Bay Cities Council of Government, the homeless service tax force, because I want to see what we can help the homeless in the city. Because there is, you know, we passed that, that proposition or the measure for the LA County. So we need to get our share of money into Hawthorne to help the, the homeless, okay? So I, I'm joining that tax force. Some other day for you guys to remember, precise April 13, okay? April 27, 28 is gonna be the Hawthorne Relay for Life at the Hawthorne High School. So it's gonna be 24 hours event again, from the Saturday, the 27, from 9:00 AM in the morning, until Sunday, the 28 at 9:00 AM in the morning. So it's a 24 hours, you know, Relay for Life, and I'm helping the kids raise money. So I'm, I'm part of the fundraising chair. Also, on April 28, at 2 o'clock, is the Volunteer Appreciation Day. So it's a 37 annual volunteer appreciation day. That the form for nomination is gonna come up next week. So you have until April 5 to nominate your volunteers that help you in 2018. Okay, so you have 10, 10 slots to nominate 10 people. So, and then we award them with a certificate of appreciation and some orders on April 28 at 2:00 PM at the Hawthorne Memorial Center, Sun's Room, okay? Keep in mind, May 23rd is coming quickly, is the K-9 barbecue dinner to raise money for the K-9 unit for the police department. So put that on your calendar. So all these events are coming quickly. So if you look at the city website, we're gonna put all these dates in there, so you, so you can remember. So again, April 13, April 28, that is, you know, 27, 28 Relay, 28 Volunteer Appreciation Day. May 23rd is the K-9 barbecue dinner. And also sometime maybe first or second week in May, I'm gonna, we're gonna have that town hall meeting with all the apartment owners and property managers to talk about stuff, okay? So support the bunny breakfast. It's gonna be, you know, cute. So look for this file like this, okay? And I want to commend the chief and his officers, because they've been very busy, because people are driving very fast in all the streets. We got some fatality, you know, for this past few weeks. We have, have some fatality on the streets. So, because people are driving fast and crashing. So unfortunately, you know, we lost lives. So life is precious. So slow down and respect all the traffic laws. And you have a good evening. Thank you for coming. And keep vigilant, because Sacramento is not playing, they're dictating us. It's like they're taking our governor, our ability to govern away from us, okay? So we have to be finished. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Haddarawat, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for coming out. Wanted to wish everyone a happy Black History Month. I want to thank Michael's Learning Place for bringing out their truck, as well as Michael Lawson for coming out and giving us that wonderful presentation on the Urban League. And that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem, Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I also want to thank Michael Lawson from the LA Urban League for, for that great presentation and the history lesson about how the Urban League has impacted Los Angeles. John Mack, I remember John Mack. He was one of the presidents, and he had a very strong impact on the development of the Urban League and the city at the time. He was, he was president. I remember him well. So, uh, in, you know, council- in, you know, Councilman Talida made a very good point about, um, do young people, do young black people know who the his, the, the, the civil rights leaders were? And it's funny because, that you made that point because I, I think the same thing. And I think the answer is probably no, because civics is not taught the way it was when we were young people. When we were young people, civics was really taught in the schools and you had to know history and you had to know, um, American history. And now it's not really taught that well. So I think the problem, probably the answer is no, that they don't. And I think it, it kind of has to be up to the community to make sure that, um, our young people get the full flavor of, of the American story as it exists. Um, all of the, all of the American story. The, the issue about local control is not a joke because what has been happening over a period of time, and it's really coming to the forefront now because there are so many bills in Sacramento that really road local control and things that have already passed that will erode local control. And we really have to push back against it. But again, it has to be the citizens pushing back and it has to be the businesses pushing back. So again, I urge the businesses to, um, contact their representatives and let them know how the street vending ordinance is going to affect them or will, or how they expect it to affect them, and if it does affect them, how it has affected them. Because I think if, if they hear enough, if they hear enough opposition, it can be, um, it can be, uh, retracting. Cannabis is another issue that we'll talk about at another time, but that's another issue that, um, it, you know, the, 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 the quest from, from Sacramento to impose its will on the cities um, is expressing itself in, in cannabis as well. And I will have something to say about that in the future, but I don't want to talk about that right now. But again, there are so many areas in which Sacramento is trying to impose its will on the cities. We have to be very vigilant. And, um, thank you all, that, thank you all for coming out, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you to all my council colleagues for their feedback, for their reports, um, for our city treasurer and our city clerk and their feedback for, um, our police officers and our police chief for doing a great job. Before I get going, let's have Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry, I have to go back. And that's, just to thank the city attorney and the city attorney's office. Because I know they have been working diligently to, um, to, uh, to, to fix the, the old ordinances and to, um, and to, uh, you know, to, um, work on the wording and, and, and change the wording to the old, from the old ordinances so that they, they, they've modernized them and made them more up to date. So I thank the city attorney's office for that effort.
Absolutely. I echo your praise for the, for our, uh, management here at the city hall. And I also want to, on behalf of the city council, um, thank you for so, having some great choices for your assistant city manager, the finance director, and for the other position, other finance director that you have. I, I just, and you know that we've talked about it and we knew that, uh, you, it was like, uh, a very careful, careful, careful process that you, so that we could get the best people in those positions. And I'm extremely happy by the choices that you've made and the city council is as well. So, I mean, these people are well-prepared, uh, they know what they're doing and they have the interest of the city of Hawthorne at heart. So let's welcome them once more with a big applause. So.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't make any choices. It was being advertised for several months and this is the best we got. So I apologize for shortcoming.
Oh, no, 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 what are you talking about? Come on, man. All of a sudden you deflated any praise I gave? Come, you know what? I'm going to have to talk to you after this meeting, man. You know, I'll talk to you later. Now, you know what? Arnie's known for his humility and, uh, he's just, it just speaks to his humility that, uh, that he's able to, you know, you know, just not give himself enough credit, but we give him enough credit. So let's give him a round of applause. That's really what it comes down to, folks. That's really what it's about. And so, uh, yes, make sure you guys pay attention to what's happening in Sacramento, take it seriously. Because when it happens, you, you know, uh, we don't want it to happen. Take it seriously because these people think that they have like, uh, free rein to do. There's no checks and balances with our government. It's a one-party system up there right now. I mean, the reality, let's just talk frank. There's no, there's not, there's not counterbalance to check them so they feel that they could do whatever they, they want to do. It's all their little projects that they want to put in place that won't affect them. Like we said, they can put them in place. Put, so we just need to be careful. We need to be the balance for them. So let's just stay vigilant on that. And, um, yes, the Black History Month is a great thing. Um, I remember my dad, uh, when he was choosing a place to live, you know, Hawthorne, he, he had the different, uh, choice between Hawthorne and Torrance. The only reason we didn't move to Torrance was because they had a pool and supposedly I was going to drown if I fell and this whole little thing. So he chose the property that he, the comparable property they saw in Hawthorne instead of the one in Torrance. So that's why, how we ended up here in Hawthorne on York Avenue. And it's, and it's interesting and cool to think, oh, you know, um, down the street, the Beach Boys actually went to York School for like their, uh, primary grades before they went to Hawthorne High School. They actually lived on the east side of Prairie, uh, near like Yukon or something, or Docon or Doty, one of those. And so, you're right, back then, the, the, the face of Hawthorne, you know, African-Americans moved into Holly Park and back then there was a lot of people, engineers who were, you know, were white Caucasians who were working at the aerospace. Um, they moved out, you know, we, we, you know, brown, brown people started moving into certain parts of the city. So at some point, unfortunately, I don't know why they wrote this down, but there was references to Hawthorne being as a ghetto in some of our budget. Some of our budgets refer to certain parts of our city as ghetto. And, and that's unfortunate that people in the past referred to them. But guess what? The city of Hawthorne has proven to be a vibrant city that's inclusive, that's diverse, that's economically strong, that has a lot of hard-working people, uh, blue collar and white collar people in the city of Hawthorne. And, uh, we're very diverse. We are a city of good neighbors. I don't really think that if you go to other cities, you can see a, a city that is as diverse as ours. I mean, we have an Islamic center, we have a Muslim community, Islamic community, uh, we have an African-American community, we have a Tongan community, African community in particular, strong. We, you know, we even have Nigerian masses at St. Joseph's because of that. Filipino, Central American, Cuban-American, and Italian-American, American community. Like the widespread, active, vibrant communities that have, you know, make sure that they're, make themselves known. So you can't really go to these other parts of, of these neighboring cities and see that, not even Torrance, I think. Sorry, brother. But, you know, not, I mean, you know, you know, it, I'm really proud, you know, that, what we have here, so. Hawthorne's the place to be, man. And you saw that article. That's not just by, you know.
That's a big, that's a big deal.
That's a big. And you're right, you're right. I think, uh, Commissioner Darlene Love, yeah, we talked about that, man. I mean, the, when my parents moved in. Well, you went through some stuff and we know that, but we're in a good place. But, you know, we've, things have changed. And look at where we are now. So, you know, uh, we have a, look at the dynamic we have here. So I won't take too, too much of your time. Thank you all for being here. Okay, let's, let's have a prayer for some of our, uh, former commissioners or current commissioner and a former commissioner, Mr. Alan Richards and Mr. Charles Bowie, um, who are sick right now. Let's, please pray for them, okay, so that they, uh, recuperate themselves, uh, well and they can come in back so we can see them, okay? Anybody else? All right, this meeting is now adjourned.